Welcome to the September 8th meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Council members Draymond, here. Friedman, here. Najarian, here. Weaver, here. Mayor Quintero, here.
The flag salute this evening will be led by Councilmember Draymond and the invocation by the city clerk.
Would all please stand, place your right hand after your heart, and salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we bow our heads? This evening, we pray for peace and safety in this lovely community. Let us take this opportunity to remember our firefighters and others who were fighting the SoCal wildfires, and especially those who have paid the ultimate price in their effort to save the lives and property of others. As we approach the anniversary of September 11th tragedy, we ask that the souls of all lost lives be forever remembered. Finally, we ask that you guide our council in exercising wisdom in all their decisions.
Madam Clerk, may we have your report?
The agenda for the September 8, 2009, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, September 3, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Next, please.
At item 3 comes Presentations and Appointments at 3A is the agenda review for the meetings of September 15, 2009.
Mr. Starbird.
Yes, I'll go to Zizet Mullins for the staff report. Zizet?
Thank you, Mr. Starbird. Housing, there's no agenda items for the Housing Authority meeting. There's no agenda items for the Redevelopment Agency meeting. We do have a joint public meeting for the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency. Director of Development Services requests from the Harley-Davidson Love Ride Foundation for co-sponsor of the 26th Annual Love Ride Fundraising Event. For the council meeting, our action items: Fire Chief status regarding the station fire, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power lease agreement for the lease of the portion of city-owned property located at 900 North Glendale Avenue. We also have the General Manager of the Glendale Water and Power Titan Hydro Power Project Power Sales and Acquisition Contract with the Southern California Public Power Authority. We have a hearing for Director of Planning Glendale Register of Historic Resource Listing for the property at 1758 Roar Street. We also have another hearing, Director of Planning Glendale Register of Historic Resource Listing for the property at 1020 Hellcroft Road. And that concludes the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next?
At item 3B, pardon me, is the renaming of the Sports Complex to Ron Gray Sports Complex. There's a proclamation.
I don't think so. Okay. Actually, I thought it was the Verdugo Power Academy.
I was told that 3B, that would be 3B.
Okay, great. All right, if the people who are here to receive the proclamation, perhaps they can come to the podium?
Point of order? Is this an agenda item?
I never saw this. It was just given to me.
Well, if it's a mayor's commendation, that's one thing, but if this is, and then the way she stated it was the renaming of one of our parks, that would be required to be on the agenda.
Roosevelt Middle School. It's a proclamation for a gentleman who passed away in the train.
Oh, oh.
Mr. Mayor. Could you reread the item again?
Just clarify, what is going on is that the Glendale Unified is going to...
Whereas Ron Grace grew up in the neighborhoods and playgrounds of Glendale and attended Glendale Community College and San Diego State University, Ron began his career working at Roosevelt Middle School in 1985 as a coach, history teacher, and the head counselor of the school. His charismatic and caring personality touched the lives of hundreds, if not thousands, of students or families and staff members. Ron Grace lived each and every day in accordance with his deeply-held convictions, principles, and beliefs. He devoted his days to being a wonderful husband and father and to helping his students develop the skills and positive attitude necessary to achieve their goals and attain their dreams. He loved sports and was an exceptional quarterback in high school. He always cheered for his favorite team, the San Diego Chargers. Whereas Ron Grace and 24 others were killed when a commuter train collided with a Union Pacific freighter on September 12, 2008, hundreds of friends, family, and students gathered at his memorial service to honor his life. Ron's wife, Jan, son's Brian and Andrew, and his five siblings and many friends, coworkers, and students mourn his passing and remember him for the good and kind man that he was. The superintendent of Glendale Public Schools, Michael Escalante, and the members of the Board of Education will rename Roosevelt Middle School's gym and field, the Ron Gray Sports Complex, on September 11, 2009, in honor of Ron's dedication and inspiration to the students of Roosevelt Middle School. Therefore, I, Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale, on behalf of the entire Glendale City Council, hereby join in honoring Ron Grace's life and celebrating the renaming of Roosevelt Middle School and gym, the Ron Gray Sports Complex, in remembrance of his life, values, and his monumental legacy of motivation and inspiration to all of those who were privileged to know him.
On behalf of Roosevelt Middle School staff and community, my name is Lynn Marso, and I'm the proud principal at Roosevelt Middle School. This is Maurice James, one of my assistant principals. We greatly appreciate and thank you for doing this. And this Friday, September 11, at 8:30 a.m., the entire staff and former staff and community members and our Joilee Wagner, our Board of Education member, will be honoring the Grace family, who will be there to hear the proclamation and accept this, and also a plaque in the dedication of the Sports Complex in his honor. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to add my thanks on behalf of the Board.
I want to thank you, Ms. Wagner, and Rick Reyes, who I know was also instrumental in helping with the proclamation. All right, next item?
At item 3C is Verdugo Power Academy Presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council. I'm here tonight along with members from Verdugo Workforce Investment Board and the Glendale Community College to introduce you to the Verdugo Power Academy. Our first official class will start on September 21, 2009. How this project or program came about, two years ago, I met with the Glendale Community College staff, and I asked them if there's a way we can put together a program that would help us train our local residents on utility business, on the work that we do for utility. Apparently, at that time, we're finding out that not too many people really realize how good of a career you can have with a utility. And so, we tried to work with them and tried to figure out means where we can start training from our community to work for the local community. Like I said, it started about two years ago, and we have been brainstorming on how we can get this about until about July of 2009, when Verdugo Web informed us that there's some stimulus money available to start a program like this. And so, we applied, filled out an application, went through an interview process, and they selected this program as one of the projects or programs that they want to fund using the Obama stimulus fund. So, they granted us $174,000, and now the hard work really starts, well, to make it work. So, we're here to present to you that we think that this program is another example where a local community plus a local utility and the city itself can work together with its resources in order to develop more of our residents or our community members into contributing members of the community. So, with that, I'd like to introduce some of the partners. We have with us a lot of people from Glendale Community College, and I'll let them introduce them. But I'd like to start with Rich Roach. He's the chairman of VWEB, and talk a little bit about the program, and after that, we'll have Mr. Vahe Perumian, the president of the Glendale Board of Trustees.
Good evening. My name is Rich Roach. I'm with AT&amp;T, but tonight, I'm representing the Verdugo Workforce Investment Board. I'm the chairperson. I have a whole lot of comments, but bottom line is Ramon sort of went through most of them. We, the Web, got quite a bit of stimulus money from the federal government, and we're trying to find ways to put people back to work. It's doing training, trying to figure out what jobs are going to be out there. So, we put out an RFP, about 20 different programs responded, and of that, we went through a review process, and the Power Academy came out number one. And it's based on three reasons. The first one, it's talking about training, good quality training, that puts people back to work. The second one is the fact that there's a job, a critical job shortage of power technicians throughout the region. Here in Glendale, Pasadena, Burbank, through LA, these are good jobs, and there's a need for them. The third one is that this training brings its green jobs, because it's creating a skilled workforce to work on power grids, smart grids, as well as power conservation. So, they're great jobs. We're able to bring $274,000 worth of monies to this effort. Additionally, the Web is looking at, and we're applying for additional grants for a continuation and expansion of the program. We're putting in for $1 million to the California Department of Energy and a few others. So, hopefully, we can continue to grow the program. So, it's a great program. It's the right thing at the right time. So, thank you for letting us be part of this.
Good evening. My name is Vahe Perumian, and I'm the president of the Glendale College Board of Trustees. And for the second time this summer, I'm appearing in front of you to strengthen the ties between the college and the community it represents. This is a great occasion for us. It's been a tough year for community colleges. We've been in the news for the big or small cuts that we were going to take. In fact, we are going to end this year with 3,000 unfunded students. So, we have a year where everyone wants to go back to school, to get retrained, to obtain new skills, to re-enter the workforce, which is shrinking, but we're taking everyone we can. And this is yet another way where we are approaching the community and saying that we're here for you, that we will look at every program where we can, no matter how big or how small, where we can strengthen the ties and increase our input into this community and serve our community even better. I'd like to introduce some of the people we've got here today. I've got three other members of the Board of Trustees here, Dr. Armina Alkopian, our clerk, Mr. Tony Tartagni, and Ms. Ann Ransford, and absent today, but here in spirit is Mrs. Anita Quinones Gabrielian, who's our vice president. We also have Dr. Don Lindsay, the president of the college, and several members of the administration in the audience. So, what I'd like to do is to present you with two plaques that we've prepared. They're nearly identical, but this one reads, "In appreciation to the Glendale City Council and the Verdugo Workforce Investment Board for partnership to train the future workforce in the Glendale Power Academy, from the Glendale Community College Board of Trustees, September 2009." And this is nearly identical, except it identifies the Glendale Water and Power Department. And, Mr. Quintero, if I could have you take these?
Right. This one is...
For your offices.
Right. And we'd also like to invite you to the official kickoff or launch, which will take place sometime in early October, when Congressman Schiff will be available, and he'll be present at that ceremony as well. And thank you very much for your time.
Can I just say that that is a beautiful poster?
This was designed by one of our art instructors at the college.
Terrific.
Almost reminiscent of a WPA.
Yeah, it's gorgeous.
It's got that look, that vintage appeal.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Next, please.
At item 4 are city council or staff comments.
Mr. Weaver.
I have to apologize for forgetting to thank the firemen for what they did while Glen Oaks Canyon was on vacation, and ultimately, what they've been doing with the station It's hard to explain adequately how much they have meant to this city, but I thought I would throw one other thing in to it. If one more idiotic gat fly stands up here and has the nerve to say, "The policemen deserve the pay they get, but the firemen don't because they lounge around the firehouse," I will cut them off at the pass, tell them off, and/or leave the council chambers. There's an article that was in the paper just recently, and it says, "Firefighters, as it turns out, a firefighter's heart always stays on the job. Firefighters have a much higher risk of suffering a heart attack going to, being at, or after a fire. It's physical stress as well as mental stress. Police and paramedic workers have the same risks." So, for anybody to stand up here in front of this council and to say on TV that the firefighters, who have been pounded on endlessly by gat flies here, don't deserve our admiration and respect for what they do, to think they're being overpaid, just look what they've done for us. That shouldn't be lost on us ever.
Again, Mr. Mayor? Okay, thank you. What an entrance. Mr. Weaver, don't forget backs, shoulders, necks, elbows, and knees. They're also part of the profession. Anyone else? Mr. Draymond, okay. In addition to thanking the firefighters, actually, I had an opportunity to drive around La Croix sent to Hanga, up Angelique Crest till the roadblock, and all I can say is, we were so lucky as a community, La Croix sent and La Canyada, that there weren't any structures lost or even lives, other than the two firefighters, obviously. But, I mean, regionally, we were just extremely lucky, because that burnt area is literally into the backyards of the homes. I want to also thank the Glendale PD, the captain, lieutenant, sergeants, and patrol personnel involved with the Michael Jackson funeral. They did an excellent job of putting everything together. The media, there was literally three-quarters of a mile of satellite trucks, cameras, print media, and everything associated with the funeral. And they were quite happy that the police got everything going, functioning well. I think the residents did okay. They were allowed in and out, access to their homes, as well as the business people. But anyway, I just think the, well, I guess they're showing some of the video, yeah. So, they just did an excellent job, and...
Mr. Mayor, do we know, did they eat and shop in Glendale while they were here?
Actually, I was there in the morning and then went back in the afternoon, evening, and absolutely, they were all, I'm sure the little restaurants surrounding Forest Lawn must have done real well, because they were all eating and drinking commercial, you know, products that they bought. And as I mentioned in the news press, I mean, there was coverage, international coverage, three British channels, all of the different European, from Russia to Southern Europe, South America, South Africa, Asia, China, Japan, Taiwan. So, it was quite a bit of coverage for the city of Glendale and the funeral. And I do also want to add that the city of Glendale did not pay a dime for these services. We contracted with Forest Lawn. The expenditure is an estimated $120,000 to $140,000, and it will be covered by Forest Lawn, and obviously, they'll be reimbursed by the Jackson estate. So, that's it. All right, next, please.
Item 5, A through C are consent items. They are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Motion, Mr. Mayor, move the consent calendar. Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Draymond, Friedman, Najarian, Weaver, Mayor Quintero.
Next, please.
Item 6 are oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay, you'll be allowed to speak for three minutes in this portion of oral communications, basically for announcements. We'll start with Ross Paulson, followed by Helen McDonough.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council and Mr. Starbird and Mr. Howard. My name is Ross Paulson, and I am the Assistant Regional Commissioner for Glendale's AYSO program. Briefly, we have quite a few kids in the program this year. We have about 3,700 kids this year in the program, which is just slightly up from last year. There's a little bit more. It's nice to see a few more smiling faces out there. We have over 1,000 volunteers. I don't even know how many training sessions we've run this year. We've run five Safe Haven programs where we deal with child protection. We've done at least five major coaching clinics, which deal with separate courses for a number of coaches. And we've done at least five referee clinics. All of these people, including myself, including the regional commissioner, are all volunteering their time to spend out there with the kids on the field. And we also have other parents that help with regard to the program. The reason I'm coming here tonight is to make a special in-person invitation to all of you to attend our opening day ceremony, which is this Sunday, Sunday at 6 o'clock at the Glendale City College. And at the opening ceremony, all of the teams are there represented, and all of the kids are wearing their, basically, brand-new uniforms. And they have a banner. Each kid, each team has a banner with their team sponsor. The kids' names are on the banner, and it has their, like, team logo, which can be anything, if you can imagine, because we have kids from, who are under five to under 19, it could be almost anything. Anyways, I just would ask that, if you could, please come down to Glendale City College. If you are there, maybe you can say something with regard to what's going on, maybe say hi to all of the parents and people that are there. Just with regard to one small item that Mr. Weaver mentioned, which was the fireman, I have one of those brave firemen's daughters on my team, and many times, he's not always able to make all of the games because of his duties, he's not always there. And I want to thank him and many of the, and all of the other firemen who did save our homes. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a wonderful event, just watching all the cute little kids in their outfits, so excited about opening day. It's quite an event. Helen McDonough, followed by Susie Jacobs.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, and city staff. My name is Helen McDonough. I'm from Massage Envy Glendale, and I'm here to make an announcement about an event next Tuesday, September 15, called Massage for the Cure. It's an annual, one-day event presented by Massage Envy. There will be over 590 locations in 40 states participating in this event. Many of you know that some of the facts from the National Cancer Institute is that in 2009 alone, there will be 192,000 new cases of breast cancer in the U.S., and more than 1,900 of those will be men diagnosed with the disease. Of these, more than 40,000 women will die, and more than 440 men will succumb to breast cancer. So, please come out on Tuesday, September 15. The cost of the fundraiser is $35 for a one-hour therapeutic massage, $10 of which will be donated to the local affiliate of the Susan G. Komen for the cure. Additional donations will be accepted and are greatly appreciated. We are currently taking reservations at 818-246-3689. We are doing massages from 7:30 in the morning to 10 o'clock at night, and we hope to beat the leading clinic, which right now is in Chicago, that has 159 massages scheduled for that day. So, I want to show them that Glendale, California, is the number-one clinic, and we want you all to come out and get massages that day. Tell your friends and family. Again, the number is 818-246-3689. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Susie Jacobs, followed by Leon Mayer.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, esteemed panelists up here, hello. So, after you massage your body, you can come and massage your political voice. Assemblymember Paul Cracory, my boss, is hosting a Safe Streets workshop on the September 15 from 7 until 8 p.m. at the Buena Vista Library in Burbank. That's 300 North Buena Vista. He has Bill AB 766 about safe streets. In Burbank, Police Department's own Carl Povolitis has been really instrumental. I watch you, I follow the articles in the paper. I know that speeding, public safety, local control over speed limits, an important issue. And we are holding a public workshop and forum. There'll be representatives from the state and local law enforcement. So, I'm inviting everybody in Glendale, 7 until 8 o'clock next Tuesday night, Buena Vista Library in Burbank. It's not too far. You can take Glen Oaks, safe Glen Oaks, and come on down and make your voice known. To RSVP, please contact Anita Avakian in our office, 818-558-3043. No one will be turned away if you didn't RSVP. You could also go to the website, or you can email Anita directly, anita.avakian@asm.ca.gov. Thank you so much.
Leon Mayer, followed by Colin Leggerton.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer, and I'm here on behalf of the library and the friends of Glendale Public Library to give you a last announcement about our next event, which is Millennium Makeover, Your Space YouTube, MySpace YouTube, and the Future of American Politics. The author is Michael Hayes, and Mr. Hayes is a national expert on communication. He served for 20, 25 years in the field of consultation with television stations, charter communications, entertainment, to survey what the... Makeover, Your Space YouTube, MySpace YouTube, and the Future of American Politics. The author is Mike, Michael Hayes, and Mr. Hayes is a national expert on communication. He served for 20, 25 years in the field of consultation with television stations, charter communications, entertainment, to survey what the people who watch these programs were thinking, were doing, what they wanted. And that's what resulted him in his writing this book, Millennium Makeover. It's a famous book, and it preceded the Obama election, and he will be there to talk about his book, to answer questions, and to talk to particularly people who are now called millennials. A millennial is anybody who was born between 1982 and 2003, and this is the generation that he's talking about, but I like to think there's more people voting, and will be voting, than just the millennial people. In any event, this event will be at the Central Library this Thursday, 7 o'clock. It's free. You're, you'll be able to listen, ask questions. And in view of the recent turmoil going on in Washington now, there might be a lot of questions that people want to ask, and he'll be there to answer them. So we're looking forward to you being there on the 10th of September. Now, I have somebody with me who is not going to be there, but he's going to be there on the 17th of April, 7 o'clock, at the Glendale Public Library. And he is an author. He happens to be born, raised in the Glendale area, going to school here, and went to Tufts University. And then he took a great, magnificent journey of 14,000 miles into China, and I could talk more about it than maybe he could, but I'm going to turn you over to Colin Ledgerton, the son of Victor Ledgerton, the father of the duck splash. And Colin, would you come forward and address the group and talk about your program coming up?
Okay, we'll start a new time for you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Quintero, city council members and staff. As Leon so eloquently introduced me, my name's Colin Ledgerton. I was born and raised here in Glendale, but more recently, I've spent a few years in China. And among that time I spent in China, I spent a few months with a friend traveling around the border regions of China, which are inhabited by ethnic minorities quite different from what you normally think of as Chinese. So we spent some time on buses and trains along those areas, trying to learn some about the culture and the languages. And then my friend and I wrote this book, Invisible China, which came out this year. And now I have a couple of events coming up soon to promote it and be able to share it with the local community. This Thursday at 7, I'll be talking at Flintridge Bookstore up in La Cañada. And then next Thursday, the 17th, thanks to Leon Mayer and the wonderful people at the Glendale Public Library, I will have an event with a slideshow full of pictures and stories and signings of the book at the Glendale Central Library. And in addition to those few months traveling around the border regions, I spent a couple of years living in Urumqi, among the Uighurs, who are one of the ethnic minorities in China, and actually happened to live in the very part of Urumqi where all the riots happened a couple of months ago. So I hope with that time at the Glendale Central Library, I'll be able to bring in a little insight on what those riots were about, as well as some of the cultures we encountered along our travels through China. So that at the Glendale Central Library, we'll be next Thursday, September 17th, at 7 p.m., and I hope you all can make it.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, unfortunately, I won't be in town, otherwise I would absolutely be there. It's a fascinating book. I'm planning on buying it.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we've got Dan. Victor.
Thank you very much, Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, and staff. It's a pleasure to be here on behalf of Glendale Kiwanis and the 5th Annual Kiwanis Incredible Duck Splash. We thank you for your cosponsorship of the event. In the first four years, over $300,000 was raised for the participating organizations, nonprofits, and schools. And this Friday, at the Americana brand, we will have our opening of the Glendale Duck Season, 12:45, with dignitaries. I know you've been invited, and I hope some of you can be there. We will also have the Chrysanthemum Valley High School Marching Band, and the several high schools' bands will also be participating in the race day on October 24th. And we will also have coverage this year of both the opening day and the race day from CBS2 and KCal 9, so that we hope that particularly some of the top nonprofits, which have been raising $5,000 to $10,000, and we hope a lot more this year, will be getting some exposure on TV, as well as the excellent coverage we've been getting from the Glendale News Press and the local printed media. We're certainly pleased to have some outstanding sponsorship, again, from Baxter Healthcare, the Healthcare Foundation at Glendale Memorial Hospital, or at Glendale Adventist Hospital, the Glendale Memorial Health Foundation, CM Joseph, Patricia Alamon's State Farm Insurance Agency, and Store It All, to help underwrite the costs of the duck race, so that the full amount of the adoptions will, between the organizations and the Glendale Kiwanis Foundation grants, be going back into the community. We strongly encourage and support these many organizations, particularly considering the constrained budgets that they're all encountering this year, and we especially expect to have many more schools participating, perhaps over 20 of our Glendale Unified School District, as well as many private schools. We expect that it will be as much fun as we've had in the past, and I know some of you have been to the duck race. It's rather unusual. We expect to grow, in spite of the economy, I just learned that Sunday's 15th Annual Cincinnati Duck Race, which is the largest in the U.S. at this time, finally got past their 80,000 goal and reached 100,000 ducks, and we hope someday to be able to do that with a large number of groups participating. And we encourage the public, particularly those that are approached by some of the participating nonprofits and schools, to adopt ducks either with the forms or online at ducksforkids.com. And information is also there if additional organizations want to register and become a part of the flock. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, next please.
An item, excuse me, item seven are adoption of ordinances. 7A is the ordinance amending sections of Title II of the GMC pertaining to the terms of office of members of boards and commissions, and the composition of two boards and commissions. It was introduced by Councilmember Draymond on September 1, 2009.
Mayor, I'd like to inquire if, I assume that 7A and 7B have to be introduced, have to be voted on separately. I assume because one is an urgency ordinance, the other is?
In addition, they're unrelated. 7B is lease of property.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Mayor, I'll, I will move 7A.
Second. Yeah, I have one speaker card, Jolene Wagner.
Jolene Wagner here. I came to the meeting as a member of the Board of Education to thank you, to be present when you made the proclamation for Ron Grace. He was a counselor for two of our children and, and a friend to me. But I'm, but I'm here on this issue because I am an Arts and Culture Commissioner, and I would just, because I haven't perhaps read the details as closely as I should, ask you to consider, as you look at the item, that currently, under this seven-person commission, one of those seats is designated as a representative of the Glendale Unified School District. That's the seat I have been serving on. Doesn't have to be a board member. But I'm not sure how that position would continue in the five-person format, and I would just ask you to consider that whoever gets that appointment might, I would hope, as a board member, a school board member, confer with the district, so that, so that we maintain that relationship between the school district and the Arts and Culture Commission, so long as the Arts and Culture Commission exists as commission. That's all.
Mr. Draymond.
Mr. Howard, we, we have a number of Title II boards or commissions.
Sir.
More than one, anyway, that have particular requirements or of that sort. For example, well, we've already done DRB, but DRB has requirements as to a number of architects or landscape architects. We also have, I believe, with, is it?
TPC.
TPC is another, yeah. So this, and this was discussed, actually, and during the debate that we had, and I think it is doable.
It's not only doable, it, the qualifications that exist in the current ordinance roll over into this ordinance that has not been changed. All it does is reduce the seven members to five, but the qualifications, at least one member has to be a member of the Board of Education or Glendale Community College, still has to remain.
Or a representative of the district in some way.
The language has not changed when it comes to the qualifications for this board.
I think, in my experience coming to this appointment, that how that happens is a bit of a mystery, I think. There, we certainly had cooperation in, in my appointment, and I thank you for that. It's, it's, has been an interesting ride, and I'll, we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Any other comments? Roll call.
Councilmembers, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
And Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next please.
Item 7B is an urgency ordinance authorizing and approving a lease of real property located at 116 West California Avenue to Glendale Arts, offered on September 1, 2009, by Councilmember Draymond.
Mr. Mayor, I will move 7B.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next please.
At item 8A, Director of Human Resources Regarding Proposed Ordinance of the City of Glendale Providing For Salary Supplement and Continuation of Certain Benefits for City Employees Who Are Members of the National Guard or Armed Forces Reserves and Are Called Up for Active Duty. And at 8A1 is an ordinance for introduction.
Mr. Starboard, you want to give us just a quick?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the title that Rita Redd does a nice job of summarizing. In effect, this extends from a 30-day limit to a maximum of one year, both salary and benefit supplements, for those people who are actively called, are called up for active duty in any branch of the armed service while employees of the city. I might note, this is the eighth year in which you've extended this benefit.
I might also note that it's been a catastrophe for many of the reservists and National Guard service members who have been recalled time after time on active duty, and there are very few employers that provide these type of benefits. Mr. Weaver.
Glad to introduce the ordinance at 8A1.
Okay, any other comments? The ordinance has been introduced. Next please.
Item, item 8B, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Regarding Proposed Pacific Pool Development Project at Pacific Park. At 8B1 is a motion amending the existing contract with RJM Design Group, Inc., contract number 104371, adding design, development, construction document, bidding, construction, administration phases, and lead certification to the contract for the amount of $551,400, and authorizing the city manager to execute the amendment for a total not to exceed $644,050.
Mr. Chapman.
Yes, briefly, what I'd like to do is I'd like to call up Dave Ahern, the Capital Projects Administrator. He'll give a brief report, and then we'll take any questions that you have. But basically, this is a follow-up to the March 31st council item. Dave?
Mayor Quintero, members of the council, the report before you tonight is an amendment to an existing contract with the RJM Design Group for the design of the Pacific Park Pool Project. The proposed design is what council directed when we last brought this to you earlier this year, and that's for a six-lane L-shaped design pool. We anticipate the project will come within the $6 million budget that we discussed, and that would include the proposed contract amendment that's before you tonight. This contract amendment provides for the design for the pool. It also includes lead design, which was one of the directives from council. So the goal is to reach a lead silver design with this pool project. We've added, or RJM has added a new consultant to the aquatics design team for the project. We think this consultant's going to give us a stronger voice and vision in terms of designing the pool elements that council desires. So we have outlined a 24-month schedule for the project in the report before you. That would complete it in the fall of 2011. That's simply a rough estimate of the schedule. Our goal and the direction for my boss is to get it done by the end of May in 2011, to have it ready for that summer. So that's our target, which would be closer to 18 months, and we think it's achievable. So we have the, the architects are here, the pool consultant is here, staff is here, recreation staff is here to talk about the ongoing operational aspects and programming of the pool, and we're ready to answer any questions you might have.
I thought you were going to say, "I'm fired up and ready to go." Fired up and ready to go.
We're going to make, wear his Speedos every day between now and when it's done.
Got him on. Comments, questions? Mr. Najarian.
Just a few questions. Mr. Ahern, the, the contract amendment amount, $551,000, is within the preliminary budget that you had over?
That's correct. It's within the estimated $6 million budget that we presented.
Because the scope of the original contract now is being extended to actually do the design?
That's correct.
Features of the pool.
All of the engineering, construction drawings, lead design was something that we hadn't anticipated. We've added, and we've kept the cost down in terms of, the consultant is?
And there's a lead component as well?
Yes, absolutely.
That we've discussed about. So how deep is the pool going to be?
We can answer that for you with, with my answer, or I can have the design consultant come up and answer it. Start.
Are there different answers?
Would they be the same answer?
Why don't we test you and see?
They would be the same answers. The pool starts out at a shallow end at about two to three feet, and then the deepest section of the pool is about 10 feet. Yeah, 10 feet. And more shallow area than deep area. And this pool, as we've discussed before, attempts to serve many masters, so it's got recreational aspects to it. There'll be some ability to do diving in this pool with a recreational diving board, not a, not a competition board. You'll be able to swim, have competition swimming there in terms of, you know, starting block dives. You'll be able to practice water polo in this facility for recreational use, but not competition use.
The, the two-foot area is in that side?
It's really at the, at the end of the L, and it's where the steps are to provide instructional area for, for children, and also for seniors. So it's really the steps is that shallowest end.
When will we see this again as a council?
We would probably be back to you with design development drawings, I would estimate, by January, or sooner.
Obviously, please keep us abreast in case any one of us sees something that warrants a change or a content.
Sure.
We can give our input.
Absolutely. What, we're very confident with this design team and the new aquatics consultant. He's doing the, the design for the reconstruction of both pools in the city of Burbank currently. One is a $6 million project, the other is $7.5 million, Macambridge Park and Verdugo Park. He's also done?
Burbank has two pools?
Yes, they do. And he's doing a number of, or he's done a number of pool projects in Los Angeles and Los Angeles County. So he's got quite a, quite a resume of, of projects and experience, so we feel confident that we can bring you the project that you want.
Okay, well, this is very exciting, Mr. Ahern, and I know you do bring projects on time and, and under budget.
Absolutely.
That's your, this isn't the first, first? That's your, this isn't the first, first construction project that you've been overseeing, but I think we're all excited. I know I personally, I was at Pacific Park a few weeks ago and kind of looked over the area. I was there to watch some soccer practice, but I looked over the area. It's going to be great. I mean, the residents of Glendale are really going to enjoy this pool, so. Mr. Drayman.
I just wanted to also add my thanks to Mr. Chapchan and his department, Mr. Ahern, and all concerned, and the public for their input, and it's been a long, long road. We're not there yet, but it's been a long, long road getting to this point. This was something I heard Councilmember Najarian speaking about before I was elected and when he was mayor, certainly led the debate on this issue. I can remember meetings in, during a very, very hot summer down at Pacific Edison and walking around on cement in the heat of the day when it was absolutely roasting out there, and sometimes there weren't many people just because of the heat. But this has been a labor of love, I know, on the part of Councilmember Najarian, and it is, he has kept us on our toes on this issue and even put his goggles up on his, his nameplate there from time to time to remind us of what the goal is. Anyway, I just wanted to thank you all, and I look forward one day to actually seeing a finished pool.
Okay, I have one speaker, Mike Mohill.
In November 2008, I and several speakers came forward to the City Council and said that the idea of a swimming pool at Pacific Park was a great idea. However, since the city was feeling the effects of the new recession, we, we should put the pool idea on hold. A lot has happened since November 2008. The one idea is glaring to me is how this council and the previous council has chosen to spend the city's money and the results. For approximately two years, many speakers have come forward and asked this council to rein in the city's salaries and pensions. Our request has fallen on deaf ears. Even with 10% unemployment in the city and county, this council has refused to listen to the city gadflies. Just a month ago, I asked the city not to pay for the new medical costs for the city workers, but you went right ahead and passed an ordinance helping the city workers. Jan Sakoku, I didn't pronounce his name right, head aquatics coach at Crescent Valley High School, said in the Glendale News Press back in December 2008, "The proposed pool would not meet the aquatic needs of the entire city. A six-lane pool would be useful for a health club with private membership, but will never be sufficient for the community's needs. Glendale, Pasadena, and Burbank water polo teams last fall came in first, second, and third place. But it is a shame that all the top teams must travel to Burbank to compete for the swimming and water polo championships because Glendale does not have adequate facilities." Again, the question is raised, how come the city of over 200,000 residents, a city manager's salary of over $200,000, managers and middle managers' income over $100,000, could not find the money for an Olympic-sized swimming pool complex, be it 10 or 12 lanes? Mr. Mayor, some time ago, you said the city had millions of dollars in the reserve account. I guess $8.5 million was chicken feed when you and your colleagues wanted to please your northern constituents, but there is the reserve accounts usage for Glendale, be it for a swimming pool or soccer fields. The balance representation on this dais is glaring. The last city council was comprised of Councilmember Weaver and Yusefian living within a quarter of a mile of each other in Glen Oaks Canyon, but there was no council voices southeast or southwest of Glendale. Councilmembers, I ask, is it fair that there are no voices heard from residents who do not live north of the 134 freeway? I do believe these residents pay taxes too. I believe it is time the city to be comprised of council districts, with the southern half of this city having council members representing them at the city hall. If these residents had a voice on this council, I'm sure there would be sufficient time, good old horse trading. Thank you very much for counsel.
Thank you, Ms. Ahern. Okay, any comments? Mr. Weaver?
My position hasn't changed on this project. I think it is a good project. It is not an aquatic center, doesn't even fit the description of it, so local pool that is greatly needed. However, I voted before to go ahead with the design, and I wouldn't mind doing construction documents, but this is also for construction. As much as we don't want to admit it, Sacramento is not done with us yet. How much more money they're going to take from the city, I don't know. We're sitting here talking $300,000 to $500,000 annual maintenance operation costs. Where's that coming from? If it's a choice between maintenance of a pool and three or five more police officers on the street, I'm going for the police. So while I think it's a great project, an deserving project, should be built, because I believe in the kids too. It is not the right time with the fiscal problems that not only this city, but every city in the state faces. I think we have the plans, we like them. You want to do construction documents and set them on the shelf until Sacramento finishes up with this, fine, but I can't wait to see where we're going to get $300,000 to $500,000 a year, new money on an annualized basis every single year for this project with the economy the way it is in the near future.
Any other comments? Mr. Najarian.
The point, point on the operational costs, although not directly on the agenda, I think need to be addressed, I would recommend and direct staff in anticipation of this pool being completed in May 2012, did you say, 2011? To look at different sources, I may direct you to the LA-84 Foundation, which provides operation and maintenance for swimming pools for disadvantaged youth within the particular precincts and zip codes that qualify. The current John C. Argu Swimming Facility adjacent to the Coliseum is just one of those facilities that obtains quite a bit of their funding from the LA-84 Foundation. LA-84 Foundation is a, when we had the Olympics in Los Angeles in 1984, there was some leftover money, believe it or not. That money was given to a foundation, charitable foundation called LA-84, which invested it, continues to invest it, and distributes it throughout the Los Angeles area to particular athletic programs which serve underprivileged children. Clearly, our location at Pacific Park, I think, would qualify it for that type of funding, if not others, being out there. So to get a head start, maybe someone can just start doing a little bit of basic research for the operations and maintenance.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I think that's a very good idea, Mr. Najarian. For myself, I think this is the right pool, the right size pool for the community and for all of Glendale, not just for the southern or western portion of the city. And I think it's the right time. If we don't do it now, it's, when, when are we going to do it? It's been long enough. It's time to move on. Most of the funds for the actual construction have come from different grants, state, community development block grants, et cetera. So we're not taking money out of our, our regular capital improvement funds.
Mr. Starbird?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, keying off of Mr. Najarian's suggestions, we will anticipate preparing an operational plan with alternatives for you for presentation at or before when you decide to go out to bid on the project. So at the time you go to bid, you'll know how, what steps you'll need to take in order to fund its operation.
Okay, I need a motion in a second.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Mayor, I assume that's the revised motion, the total not-to-exceed cost is $5,000 less on a revised motion, so I'm assuming it's a revised motion.
Yes, I'll adopt that amendment as indicated by the city attorney.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
At item 8C, Director of Public Works Regarding SR134 San Fernando Road Access and Safety Improvement Program, Fairmont Avenue Extension Project, Spec. Number 3303, Night Work. At 8C1 is a resolution authorizing the provision of a credit in the utility bills to certain eligible residents for the purpose of further minimizing nighttime construction noise.
Mr. Starbird?
Mr. Mayor, I'll go to Steve Zern, Director of Public Works, for the brief staff report. Steve?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in, as we continue with the construction of the Fairmont Bridge, the Fairmont Flyover, as it's been referred to in the 134 San Fernando area, a fairly recent development arose wherein, as we crossed over and initiated, or began to initiate construction in what was the railroad right-of-way, the rightfully owned, operated, administered by the railroad through the Southern California Railroad Authority, a request was made of us, a requirement was made of us, that we conduct the majority of that work at night. Staff has since then negotiated down to a total of 13 nights, starting somewhere around 24 nights. We got to 16, and, and now we have it down to 13. When we conducted a recent public meeting to go over the night work schedule, a suggestion was made by one of the residents that the city consider a reimbursement of some sort of electrical costs that would be borne by the residents as a result of having to shut their windows and run their air conditioning systems for a longer period of time. Construction will be between eight and nine hours each evening. As a result of that, Ms. Friedman asked us to bring this back to the city council for discussion, and tonight we have, I have Mr. Bagdani can give you a very short background, and then we've given the council, excuse me, some options to consider for the, for the reimbursement process. So I'll let Gianno, if he would, go over that with you. Then we're available to answer any questions beyond that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, just briefly, the 13 nights that we're planning to do the night work consists of seven nights that will be actually starting tonight, that will begin most of that work. It will be involving installation of, erection of false work. Most of the frames are being done during the day, and then they, they put the false work at night in the proximity of the railroad track within the railroad right-of-way. Two nights in December will be pouring or placing concrete, and two nights in January, and then one night will be in February when, once the bridge structure, superstructure is in place, then the false work will be removed. That's a night where it will be on a weekend night where the false work will be removed, and there'll be complete shutdown of the railroad tracks because there will be no railroad traffic operating at that time, given the fact that we have to remove all the false work at that point. At, as Mr. Zern mentioned, we've looked at the, some criteria as to if the city council chooses to reimburse the residents for the nighttime activity. Let's say a resident is running their air conditioning unit between eight to 10 hours a night. We prepared a criteria, which is in the staff report, that if they're within 500 or 600 feet of the construction area, that's in Exhibit A or B, that's, again, the radius is for council's consideration, that we will compensate each resident, basically it's a dollar an hour based on the rate calculation we receive from the Department of Water and Power. And so if, for 13 nights, if you run the air conditioning continuously for 10 hours a night, it will be up to $130 in some form of a credit or a rebate that can be issued to a resident that qualifies within that radius of influence essentially for the, during the construction activity that is taking place. We have prepared a resolution and a criteria for that. All the residents have to do, essentially, we can help them in sending them a form they have to fill out and verify that they live in that area, and based on the night of, number of nights of construction, we will, we can issue a credit toward their utility bill at the conclusion of the construction period. As I said, it will be up to $130, and depending on what radius we choose, that would be the area of residents who will be qualifying for this. In the resolution, there is a blank area for the radius that council chooses to do so, and then staff will, from there, basically notify the residents and give them the, the credit that is required. But they have to meet that eligibility criteria that we suggest to the recommended city council. I'll be happy to answer any more questions, if you may.
Mr. Starbird?
Mr. Mayor, let me just supplement the staff's comments, which has really been on their part to describe how the council can do this if it, if it wishes. I do have to add, from the staff's standpoint, we think this is a rather slippery slope that you walked down, if indeed you go down this road, of approving this sort of a supplement for what is a public works project, which frankly, many areas of the community will face in different ways, whether it's street construction, utility construction, or park construction. Inconveniences like these residences is part of, of living in a community where there's public works projects and improvements going on. Our concern is that others in the community will view this as a precedence and a model by which they too, when inconvenienced, should be compensated in some way. We just believe that's a slippery slope to go down from a public policy standpoint. It can be done. It's certainly appropriate if the council wishes, and we've laid out a methodology for doing that, but we would encourage you to give this considerable thought before going down this road.
Okay, for myself, I have given it considerable thought, and the impact on this neighborhood for a very, very long time is going to just be horrible. All you have to do is drive in the general vicinity, and I think there's a difference between this and paving roads and other public works that we do. This is a bridge, basically, to service the companies located there in that particular project area, Disney, DreamWorks, and other companies. And this neighborhood is basically taking it on the chin, so I think this is the least we can do. Quite frankly, it's not much, nor will it cost the city much, but I think there's a big difference between this and the other public works projects that we do throughout the city.
Mr. Starbird? I mean, Mr. Weaver.
That's Mr. Starbird.
Mr. Weaver, excuse me.
Gianno, do you recall offhand, refresh me, how much money we spent on sound isolation in that neighborhood? What's the magnitude of it, or Mr. Zern?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Weaver, the grants received by the 32 homes in that general area was a total of just over $300,000.
And then the sound wall extension?
Was, the cost was over $1 million. I believe it was $1.2 million. That was, that was undertaken by Caltrans. If I'm-
Taxpayers' dollars.
That was right.
Taxpayers' dollars.
That was a Caltrans project.
And my point being, as I recall, based on decibel readings, none of this, from an engineering standpoint, was necessary. The decibel increase in sound current and with the project end didn't rise to that level. The council decided anyhow to go for the sound insulation and the, the bridge extension, I mean, the sound wall extension. That's $1,500,000 of the taxpayers' monies, whether it's city or state, that was not necessary according to the way we calculate impacts to an area. And to now do this, again, as Ms. Starbird said, we're setting precedents. There's nothing in this city that could have been built without creating noise. Every public works project you will ever see is going to create noise, and some of that work is going to be done at night. I'm sure when they built the 134 freeway through Glendale, took out hundreds and hundreds of homes, I'd be willing to bet some of that work was done at night and did impact community. Always has, always will. So I think it sets precedents, even though the amount is small. And then, going to run the air conditioning, well, I think tonight is, what's the temperature going to be tonight, down in the 60s? What's the guarantee? You're going to have to run the air conditioning in the next, for the next seven, 10 days. I think I have a bigger problem with the fact that, as one resident wrote me, they didn't see a problem with, well, saw a problem with giving tax rebate, or the utility rebate- didn't see a problem with, well, saw a problem with giving tax rebate, or the utility rebate or reduction. Their concern was, is the trains now approaching Grandview are laying on their horn the whole way down through Grandview, Flower Street, and clear down past the 134 freeway. And they're, this individual's saying, because we put Flower Street in, now the trains are honking their horns the whole distance. I think that's the most, the more serious thing we ought to be looking at for long term, how we can get the trains to lay off their horns through there. There's gotta be some legal precedent in order for us to do that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Weaver, with respect to that, as we upgrade all the existing railroad crossings within the city of Glendale, as well as working with the city of Los Angeles to upgrade theirs, then we will be potentially eligible for a quiet zone that we would have to apply, and at that point, then you will have all the safety features in place so that the trains don't have to blow their horn as they enter Glendale or exit Glendale from either north-
Wait, we have to do them all before we can apply?
Yes, because of the proximity of these crossings are such that you have to upgrade all of them, even though, let's say we can upgrade the ones in Glendale, as you're approaching Fairmont, or as you're approaching Doran Crossing, you still have to buy for the next one, which is Broadway, Brazile, and then Sonora.
So residents down there are gonna have train noise, from trains approaching Grandview till down to Doran?
That's correct.
Well, we never knew that one before.
Mr. Starbird.
Well, I was going to point out that this line of discussion is going to get us, no pun intended, way off track.
Sorry.
We, we will prepare a report on what's called a quiet zone. There are considerable obligations for upgrading of tracks into the millions and millions of dollars in order to qualify, however, so to say, once the upgrades are complete, we'll qualify, those upgrades are very considerable, and way beyond what we currently have budgeted for upgrades on these crossings, and they've gone up considerably since the Chatsworth train accident, so we'll prepare a report to you with more information, but I don't think we can, we can anticipate in the near future the ability to be successful on application for a quiet zone.
Ms. Friedman, followed by Mr. Drayman.
Mr. Starbird, I want to thank you for your point, it's well taken, and Mr. Weaver. Certainly, construction projects happen all over the city, and we can't always be trying to placate residents every time that happens. However, I do agree with the mayor that this is an unusual project that's gone on for a very, very long time, with all kinds of inconvenience, even though we've done, I think, an amazing job, public works done an amazing job to mitigate a lot of that, still there are inevitable impacts to the residents in terms of noise, air quality, rerouting of roads, all kinds of things. We had spoke at one point about this not setting a precedent, about being able to frame it in such a way that, in order to receive this kind of compensation, the neighborhood, the project would have to rise to the kind of level of impact that this project did. Is that some, a way that we can work that into the language so that we're very clear that it's not just the repaving of a road, or the normal kinds of public works projects? And do you think that that would help prevent this from being the kind of precedent that anybody that had any kind of street work would be able to point to?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have that language in the recitals clauses now to narrow it down and make it very specific to this project, that certainly doesn't mean someone won't or can't point to it as non-legal precedent for purposes of trying to seek some form of compensation for inconvenience during another construction project, but we have crafted the resolution before you narrowly and very specifically focused on this project.
It's absolutely true that very few cities, I think, would go through what the city's gone through to try to mitigate a lot of these effects. I used to live in New York City, and when you live there, you pretty much have to expect that all types of public works, anything is done at night and all night, including trash pickup, which kind of starts at about midnight and lasts all night long with the beeping of the horns and all that, but I think it's because we do care about what the residents go through that it makes this the kind of city that it is. So I support this, and I think that that's why people live here, and I just want to really, once again, credit your department with going to extraordinary means to make this a palatable project for the residents, including with this particular night work, setting a path so that the trucks can go in loops and don't have to back up and do their beeping as much as possible, so I think that that's great, and I do support this, and I hope that it does bring some relief and allows the affected residents to be able to keep their windows shut and block out noise and have some of the impacts of this, you know, maybe be easier to swallow for you.
Mr. Drayman.
Just a couple of things, Mr. Mayor, just want to remind, just give this reminder that, at one point, we were talking about the night construction and why it was necessary, and what we kept hearing from staff was, you have to understand, this is one of, if not the biggest project that has ever been done in this city. How many times did we hear that? Over and over and over and over, and now we're hearing it's just kind of any old construction project, and it, and it isn't. And it's not just any old area of the city, it's an area of the city where an inordinate amount of construction has been going on and on and on and on, and frankly, most of the local residents in this area didn't want this project to begin with, spoke out against it vocally at the time, prior to its inception, during its inception, planning, and so on. That's just one thing I wanted to, to mention. The other thing is that the email, Mr. Weaver, that you were referring to, the point of the email, and this bolsters your point, not mine, but the point of the email was that people who moved there knew there were trains there, and should have assumed there would also be all kinds of other construction as a result. Trains make a lot of noise, so if that's the case, then why aren't we compensating everybody that lives in the area because they hear train noise? And we have to close a minute, but you see, to me, there is a great difference between someone that moves in an area, moves to an area where there is a train, train tracks and train noise, and someone who moves to an area, and then every kind of project, including, as we keep hearing from staff, the biggest construction project in, in recent memory is being constructed, or someone, say, perpetrated above their head, around their neighborhood, and it's not just the sound, it's the sound, it's the congestion, it's the dust, it's the debris, it's the hassle factor of having to constantly negotiate detours and close roads and all of that. And let's just be frank, it's not the kind of construction project you're gonna see in Rossmoyn, or in Glen Oaks Canyon, or, you know, Rossmoyn and Mountain area, or Montecito Park, or Montrose. You're just not gonna see that kind of construction project, and I wonder how we would react if, you know what, we're gonna do the biggest project in recent memory, and we're gonna drive it overhead, you know, right through one of our canyon areas, right through Chevy Chase Canyon. I think we might have a little different take. And my last point has to do with, or comment has to do with, the idea of setting precedent. We, we as a council, think about this kind of thing a lot, and we discuss it a lot, and I think everybody on this dais, since I've been here, at one point or another has raised the issue of, will our actions, no matter which way a vote goes or debate goes, will it set a precedent, whether it's legal or not? And we are concerned about that, and we should be. But you know what, folks, we set precedent with almost every vote we take, one way or another. We take policy one direction, we risk creating some sort of precedent, or argument to bolster, or action that bolsters someone's argument in the future, one way or another. You could even say, as has been mentioned here, a project up in the Montrose area prior, where we spent a certain amount of money, well, that's a precedent, it takes public policy in a particular direction. We say that a swimming pool takes us in another direction, you know, it, at a time when things are tight, we're saying it's still important to provide, perhaps even more important, to create a quality of life for an area of the city that is densely populated and has no recreational facilities. These are precedents. So anyway, I, I am not so concerned about that. If I see another project in the city, while I'm still serving as a city council member, that rises to the magnitude of this kind of a project, and we can button the impact down to a radius like this, we haven't discussed that part of it yet, but a series of areas here, whether it's 600 feet, or 300, or 150, and we can button it down to a specific number of residents and so on, then I would vote for that too. That's where I am with it, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor. Okay, Ms. Weaver.
Mr. Starbird, do you happen to recall how much money we paid out to businesses when we were building the Orange Street Garage, or loss of business?
No, I don't. I don't recall.
It was a significant amount of money.
Yeah, I really, I really don't recall.
And I know that they then came back afterwards and said they needed more money, and we finally said, wait a minute, if we start going down this path, we're gonna have, every time we do anything on Brand or whatever, we will have businesses putting their hand out and wanting more money. So, well, Mr. Drayman, you might be right, in one particular area, there are others, and I have that historical perspective to know what happened there, we just gotta watch the traps we may possibly fall into.
Okay, I have one speaker, Mike Mohill.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is a toughie for all five of you people, it really is. You're damned if you do, and you're damned if you don't. You're gonna please some people, you're gonna displease other people. The comment, going down a slippery road, whatever you want to call it, is very true. When, for example, they built the soccer complex, and there were trucks going up and down Fern Lane, did those residents get compensated for that? When we go ahead and did the remodeling on Brand Boulevard, did those businesses get compensated for those noises? I mean, it goes on and on. When we put in a freeway, do the residents along the freeway get compensated? There's no easy answer, and then what happens is, if you do have an answer, Mr. Attorney, Scott Howard's gonna, city attorney's gonna say, hey, we have a legal precedence now, and people are gonna come after us, and it's gonna cost the city millions, not thousands, but millions in dollars. So I think what the city has to do is, if we're gonna make any type of compensation, it has to be very narrow, so they don't come back and bite us. Because, you know, those residents, I mean, if I lived over there, I wouldn't like it. I mean, think about your own personal experience, you have an air conditioner, a compressor outside your yard, we're having a barbecue, and it goes on. Everybody knows the air conditioner's on, don't they? It's annoying for maybe a couple of minutes, but these people have been experiencing this for hours, days, minutes, months, so you have a tough one to call. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, how about the radius? The options are 5, 600?
Mr. Drayman?
About me, Mr. Mayor.
Oh. Jerry?
Maybe you don't want to hear what I have to say. I can see that clearly the votes are lined up to approve this, so I won't be as, otherwise as zealous as I would if I thought I had a chance to convince anybody. And it's not about the money, because the money involved is really not a large amount. I really think that it's about the principle, and it's about the precedent we're setting. But before I say anything further, Mr. Howard, as a member of MetroLink who gave the orders to the city not to do construction during the day, am I conflicted in any manner?
Did the Board of Directors provide any of this, or was it strictly ministerial? It's all staff and staffing, so this wasn't a board decision?
I don't think it was a board resolution, it was-
It's not a financial interest, the only issue that comes to mind would be potentially the doctrine of incompatibility, common law doctrine of incompatibility, perhaps, where you're essentially serving two masters in conflicting roles, and it doesn't sound like that's apparent here, from what limited information that's been presented.
Okay, and we talk about precedent, precedent, and if we afford the residents of Grange and Grant and Dale an electrical discount because they had to close their windows because of the noise, and they had to run their air conditioners as a result, who's next? I've received several letters, emails, from folks that live in La Cremona, and they're asking the question. We see that council is voting on this this weekend, or this, this week. Let's watch closely, and if council affords a utility discount to the folks in the affected neighborhood because they had to close their windows and therefore run their air conditioners, why not us? We were the victims, near victims of a terrible fire that caused noxious, poisonous fumes to be spewed into our entire neighborhood and valley, we had to close our windows, we had to run our air conditioners. Should we not afford those people the same benefits that we're affording to the folks in the affected neighborhood here, who for 13 nights have to close their windows and run their air conditioners? There's the email that Mr. Weaver referenced, the folks that live along the railroad tracks, and because the city put through Flower Street Crossing, the train engineer has to now blow his horn continuously due to the relative proximity of the crossings, should they not be allowed a subsidy? Because they have to close their windows, and those windows have to be closed, I think, many more nights than just the 13 nights that we're talking about for the affected neighborhoods. This neighborhood, as I understand, was afforded directly $300,000 in noise attenuation for double-pane windows for previous construction. And that is a lot, I think that's pretty generous, and it wasn't a huge number of homes, it was about 30 homes, each home perhaps up to $10,000 in a, in a grant, or a subsidy, or a rebate in that regard. How about the, the resident that lives next to the fire station, who is awakened in the middle of the night because the fire department has to respond to a call? There certainly, their sleep is no less precious than those that live in the affected neighborhoods, they are woken up perhaps at a much greater date, a greater number of evenings than the folks that would be here for 13 nights. Should they not also be afforded some subsidy because they have to close their windows, and they have to run their air conditioner? To bring it close to home? Every Friday, Mr. Zern, every Friday at 6:00 a.m., your darn trash trucks come by with their loud CNG engines and screeching brakes, and roar of the hydraulic arm, and lift up that garbage can, and dump it in, and bang it down, and then they stop at the neighbor's house, one house over, and then all the way up the street. And on Fridays, I don't get any sleep unless I close my windows, and I run my air conditioning and keep it set at the thermostat level. So the question is, where do you draw the line? We are being watched right now by several communities along the railroad tracks, certainly in La Cremona, to see where we're acting. I think we're setting a, a bad precedent, and we set precedents all the time, but the precedent we're setting here is paying money from the city for inconvenience and disturbances caused by our projects. So I can really not support this item.
Then, Mr. Drayman.
The reason that the city, I think it's proper for the city in this case to give this credit, it's the same reason that when a developer is doing a large project that has an impact on the neighbors of that project, they prepare an environmental impact report, and out of their own pocket have to mitigate those impacts, whether it's by putting in a new sidewalk, or doing sound protection, or anything else. The reason that it's proper for the city to issue this credit is because, first of all, this is a project that the city's undertaking, and that's different from something like a fire, where fire wasn't something that we caused. And the reason it's different from mitigating an effect, let's say, from a fire station is because that fire station is benefiting the community that's being disrupted. In this case, this community, you could argue, is not being benefited from this work. This work is being done for a business that's very important to the city. This work is being done for a business that's very important to the city, but it may not be so important to the people who are being kept up at night. So, it's very different from a fire truck, or a garbage truck, or anything else that's benefiting the people that are being disrupted by it. And unlike other construction projects that are going on in the city, how long is the duration of this project from, in terms of the actual construction?
This is over a two-year project.
Two-year period, that, as one of my colleagues pointed out, has affected everything in this neighborhood, from traffic patterns, to dust, to noise, night and, well, day, and now night. So, it's unlike a lot of the other projects, except maybe the original building of the 134 Highway and the 210 Highway. And if those people at the time, whose lives were disrupted from those, were not adequately compensated, they should've been, in the same way that when people were displaced from Chavez Ravine, they should've been compensated. So, I, this is not a lot of money. It's not a lot of money for the city. We're talking about a couple hundred-dollar credit. It's not a lot of affected homes here, but my feeling is that, in some ways, it's sort of the least we can do. And we have done for them, but at the time, that, that original amount of money was given for the soundproofing of their homes and all of the other types of things, I don't, if I heard you correctly, Mr. Zern, we didn't anticipate this kind of night work. So, that wasn't taken into account. We thought that the work would all be done during the day. So, perhaps if we had realized that there would've been night work, that amount of money might've been different. I mean, I don't know. I wasn't here then. But it's pretty common that develop, either private developers or city developers, when there's impacts to be mitigated, have to do that. And to me, this is just, this is an extension of that. It's not a new policy. It's something that environmental impact reports often lead to different types of mitigation, and this is just more of that. So, if somebody came in and was talking about, you know, noise from their trucks, I think that's a completely different situation, and I think that anybody who's hearing this would realize that two years of nonstop construction is a pretty unusual situation, and that if they were in the shoes of, of these residents, that maybe their patience would've been stretched pretty thin by this point.
Mr. Drayman.
Well, much of what I was going to say was just said. I would only add that the slight distinction I'd make is that things like natural disasters, acts of God, normal public works, you know, collection of trash, and fire stations, and civic works, and things of that sort, again, these are, are things people, I think a reasonable person understands when they buy a house next to a fire station, that eventually a fire engine's going to come out of the firehouse with its siren going. I mean, we, people, we have to assume that there's some reasonable intelligence on the part of our, our residents, and, and I, that is a very different thing than the city of Glendale deciding that to benefit a particular corporation, business entity, albeit, as Councilmember Friedman put it, important to the city, and that this is going to be ongoing for a period of years at an intense rate, that, that the two are equal. They are just, in my mind, simply not. I understand it's an argument that, that, that one can, can make, that it is a reasonable argument. I just don't agree with it, and, and I can't support that. But I would, at the same time, compliment my colleagues on a very interesting debate. It has been a very interesting debate.
Mr. Najarian.
The, the only thing that I want, would like to respond to is the statement that this construction does not benefit the residents, that it only benefits a particular corporation. Well, just, just this afternoon, we were talking about how those two corporations are the anchors and the driving force behind our vision for a redevelopment of San Fernando Road as a creative arts district. So, in a sense, that flyover is benefiting the entire neighborhood. A strong Disney and a strong DreamWorks will bring in those prop houses, and will bring in those ancillary artistic-related businesses to help the entire San Fernando corridor.
Let me just clarify that what I said was that you could make the argument, or that these residents might not believe it helps them. I personally think that having Disney in the area is going to be a huge benefit to the area, but they may not agree. And having spoken to them, I think that some of them don't agree. So, I do think that Disney being there is gonna be very good for the area, and I think that at some point, you know, as they become more integrated into the, the area there, that we'll all see that, and hopefully the neighborhood will reap a lot of those benefits.
Mr. Drayman.
One last thing I would add to, to that, about needs and desires. Many business entities desire a great many things. It doesn't mean that it is necessarily beneficial for the community, nor does it mean that they wouldn't operate without it. I mean, Disney happens to want this flyover. Doesn't mean that had the answer been no early on, that Disney would've folded their tent and left Glendale. As a matter of fact, I know many, many employees at Disney on all sorts of levels, all sorts of positions within the company, who have told me that, in their, their opinion, not interested in this flyover, wouldn't use it anyway. But their comment was, off the record, you know, what Disney wants, Disney gets. So, anyway, I, I just, I just think that's just, in my opinion, a nonstarter, to take it into the realm of saying, we wouldn't have them as an anchor, a business anchor, if, if they didn't have the flyover. It just makes, I mean, you know...
For those members who are going to vote for the item, is there interest in the 500-foot radius or 600-foot radius? The difference is approximately seven residences more are covered under the 600-foot radius. Mr. Drayman.
Well, I feel pretty comfortable with the radius that we use otherwise to constitute a neighborhood. We use it for a different reason, I mean, in a different context, I should say, but, so, I believe that radius is, what, 500? Yeah, so, that would be...
Ms. Freeman.
It's fine.
All right, do I have a motion in a second?
Unless you wanna, well, unless you wanna parse each section of the resolution separately, you also have two other points that probably need to be made. One is that the original resolution noted $104 cost to the city based on a flat rate of $8 per night. I understand, in speaking with Mr. Zern, that the contractor's asked for two more hours, which brings it to the $130 figure that Mr. Bagdanian mentioned. And so, that would need to be changed, again, with the, with the approval of the majority of the council. Instead of $104, it would be $130 based on a flat rate of $10 per night for operating a 5-ton air conditioner for 10 hours, not eight hours. And you have the alternative about whether you've got the flat rate, or that each individual would provide actual documented expenditures for air conditioning electrical usage.
Mr. Drayman.
Well, I need to address something else, but I would, for just a flat rate, but, let me, for, for myself, but let me just, I have a question that may, of course, cut counter to my, my opinion, anyway, but I just wanna raise the issue. What happens if we take this vote this evening, and, and we approve this, and next week, we hear from the contractor, and they say, oh, guess what? If we're back up to 15 nights? Or, you know what? Now that you guys have had this, this reproach-mong with the neighborhood there, we want an extra week, because you guys can just compensate them. What happens then?
As well, what if the temperatures dip below the level that you need air conditioning for?
The resolution as currently crafted is very focused on 13 events of night work, and again, it's written in the alternative, either a flat rate, $130 based upon 10 hours a night for 13 nights, or documented electric expenditure, electric utility expenditures. If, based upon the way this resolution is drafted, there were to be changes in that schedule, increasing, for example, the number of nights, we would have to come back to the city council.
What if we decrease the number of nights? Same thing?
Same thing. Same thing. Right now, the way it's crafted is based upon the firm number of 13 nights at, anticipating 10, 10-hour night.
So, would it make more sense to award it and do it by the night? That way, if it was a day less or a day more, it would just automatically adjust?
You could do that, again, right now, from what I understand, Mr. Zern can correct me if I'm wrong, is that the, the plan would be to work throughout an entire 10-hour night, based upon the contractor. I don't know, for example, if the contractor has, would extend it two more nights, but only wanna work two hours per night. And so, you've got those variables, and certainly if you wanna delegate that to staff, we can deal with it. But we'd have to include language in the resolution to address that.
Mr. Mayor, if I can. Starbuck.
It does seem to me that, that on the two items, you know, what if there's a slight change in the schedule? And should we have people produce documentation? At some point, the amount of management and handholding is going to far exceed the entire cost of this, and it wouldn't take much to do that. My suggestion would be that this be crafted in a way that, based on what we, what we anticipate will happen, but acknowledging there may be slight variations in that, that this be sort of a blanket compensation or offset for the inconveniences and noise, and if there's a one- or two-day variation one way or the other, so be it. Because this, I think admittedly, this money is more, both from the resident's standpoint and the city's standpoint, this, this, this is more an effort to show good faith and not to actually get down to calculating dollars and cents and true, true costs of inconvenience. So, in that way, we wouldn't have to manage all the paperwork, nor if there's a slight two-day variation one way or the other, we wouldn't have to come back to you and make an adjustment.
I may add that we have a calculated hourly rate, too, which even makes it a little bit easier. You can just go by the actual number of hours we worked, which is pretty easy for us, and that's less or more, we, a little bit less or a little bit more, we can adjust that.
Mr. Drayman.
Well, the reason, and this was, you're dragging out of me, the reason why I think it should be a flat rate, and that is because, right now, Mrs. Zern, we have all kinds of disagreements cropping up, where we say, hey, they were only out there, you know, two hours, and the residents say, uh-uh, no, this went on for, from this period of time to this period of time, and I just, I'm just, for, for the amount of money we're talking about, I'm just personally not interested in, in that. We get into a, well, we know how long our contractors are there. Well, you might think you do, but they were out there. Well, actually, they were off the clock, but they were just moving the equipment, or, you know, or they're not on the clock yet, they're just getting into position, and we get into this semantic game of, of what constitutes work hours and what doesn't, and it just sounds like a lot of slaughtering of brain cells to me.
I also agree, a flat rate makes more sense. Cleaner. Mr. Howard.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just so I, I understand, the ordinance is currently drafted, at least with the alternative that everyone seems to be focusing on, is $130 based on a flat rate of $10 per night for 13 events. If we're looking, I'm sorry, correct, 13 events for nine, for 10 hours, for running, operating a 5-ton AC unit, if we're looking at potentially just a, another alternative would be $130 flat rate for events of night work anticipated for the project, not specifically 13 days. So, if it turns out to be 13 and a half nights, or 12 and a half, it's still $130. Or if they don't need the full 13, it turns out 12, or if they need one day more, it still hasn't changed. It's a flat rate of $130.
That's my suggestion. Okay, that's fine with me.
We'll just, we'll delete the number of events, and we'll just note for night work anticipated for the project.
All right, do I have a motion for this? Or is it an ordinance, you said?
It's a resolution, sir.
Resolution?
With those, with those...
Need a motion?
Move the item?
One second.
With the, with the flat rate as, as stated, and with 500 feet as the radius.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
No.
Weaver.
No.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
We will return to oral communications. Discussion is limited to five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Can I have the cards, please?
Go on, sorry.
Okay, Michael Arbuckle, followed by Bill Weis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and council members, and staff members. Again, I have the privilege of speaking on the behalf of the Ivy Glen Tenants Association. Tonight, my specific premise is to acquaint you with what we have done recently. It became, to our knowledge, because of how you spoke after I spoke last meeting, that you were under the impression that everything is okay, and you were surprised that I was back speaking, and that there were further problems at the building. And so, we wanted to be fair, and we wanted to follow the HUD rules. We have, we believe we have totally, as the tenants association, actually worked with this new management in good faith, and tried to be cooperative in every way that it does not actually violate our actual civil rights under either federal, state, or local ordinances. And so, we had a meeting on Friday of the tenants association. All six, of that time, 16 of the apartments were representative, and, which consisted of a quorum, and therefore, we afterwards took a interview with the people who did not come and attend that meeting, and so far, we have actually gone through that interview with four more individuals, so a total of 20 out of 23 apartments and of tenant members have been polled. And of that poll, we have asked them, we asked them specific questions. One, do you feel everything is supposedly okay between the tenants and the current management and their way of managing? Of those 20s that have been so far polled, 17 said, no, it is not okay. Everything is not hunky-dory. Everything is not all right between this current management and the tenants. We further asked them, do you wish that the officers of the tenant association continue to bring to the city council's attention, and to any other organization's attention, actual violations? We actually put it that way. We're not here, again, as we, as I explained last week, to continue the, the process of trying to get back the old manager. Now, our only concern is where they actually violate actual civil liberties or rights of tenants, whether it be federal, state, or local ordinances or laws that they're violating. And again, 17 out of the 20s so polled, and we will continue to poll the other three that remain to see their response, said, yes, we want the current leadership to continue those fights and to continue bringing to the attention of the appropriate agencies where violations actually occur. We also asked them, since, again, ability first, and they're trying to interfere with the working of the tenants association, specifically told them that I, their spokesperson, could not speak. We could not, I could not speak for them before you, or even before them, and so we took a vote. Do you okay the, the officers of the tenant association to actually have a spokesperson? Again, 17 said yes. We also wanted to bring to your attention that, at a recent meeting on August 28 between the tenants and the management, they specifically said to us regarding the Armenian-speaking residents, that we've worked it out with them. We will go to their family members, we will not write notices in Armenian, so they can understand what's going on. We will not have actual interpreters at any joint meetings, and by the way, at that meeting, there sits the Armenian sitting there, who only speak Armenian and hardly any English, not knowing what was going on or said, that we will not do that. We will work through their families, and every single one of those Armenian tenants have okayed that we work through their families instead of writing notices or providing a interpreter. So, we asked them, again, at the tenants association meeting, because we provided a interpreter at our meeting. This is what they said to us. Do you agree that you made arrangements with the management that your family members will speak on your behalf, so they don't have to write notices and all that? Every single one said, no, we told them that we want the notices, that we're adults, and you deal with us direct. Our family members are... and you deal with us direct, our family members are too busy to come every time there's a meeting. So, again, that's where it's at, they seem to have lied. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Weisman, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, and city staff. My name is Bill Weisman, station fire evacuee from far north Glendale. You had the opportunity last week to have Chief Scoggins reporting to you on the, the response from the Glendale Fire Department to the station fire. I was still a little too stressed out to come down last week, but I did want to come down this week to comment on the extreme professionalism and competence that was shown during this fire by all of the city departments that were involved. We're extremely grateful and extremely thankful for the support we got, and I'm not going to ask you for any money to subsidize our air conditioning, even though we did have to keep it on, 24 hours a day for about a solid week there, to keep the inside of the house habitable and from filling with smoke, and, but the station fire was not a discretionary act by the city of Glendale, so wasn't, wasn't planning on asking for any reimbursement for that. We had a chance to observe things kind of build up, starting on Wednesday, August 26, when Ericsson Air Crane helicopter, which is one of those very ungainly, on aerodynamic flying, giant flying insect things, refueled at the heliport up at, next to Duke Magian Park. On Thursday, the 27th, they had placed a big yellow dip tank up there, which was used continuously during the station fire. LA County Fire Department had an engine, they attached a hose running down to the hydrant next to the access road, and that tank was filled with water, and dozens and dozens of helicopter missions were flown out of there, that we got to witness personally, since they kept us awake all day and all night while they were going on. But, you know, that's one of the things that's necessary in a crisis like this. On Saturday, when we got evacuated, the first phone call we got was from our friend who lives down in Spar Heights, and he said, you know, I'm watching GTV6 right now, and they just declared evacuation for north of Santa Carlotta, where you live. A few minutes later, the second phone call came from Officer Matt Zakarian of the Glendale Police Department, who is our local community policing officer, and the reason he called us is because we manage several mailing lists for residents in the area, for our homeowners' group, and for the CB Community Association, and other things. So as soon as we got that call, we started putting out the word on our email lists. The third, fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh calls we got were all reverse 911 calls, and the reverse 911 system does work very well. I have to say, this is the first time I've experienced it, and it was able to handle whether it, a live person picked up, or whether an answering machine picked up, so was very gratified to see that. Also need to thank our neighbors across the street, who own a rental house in Verdugo City, and it just so happened that their tenants had moved out, and they just came to us and handed us the keys, and said, take the cats and go, which is what we did. When we left, we, I shut off the gas, I left all the doors unlocked to the house, and I did so without worrying about any looting or anything like that, because we had Glendale police officers posted at every single intersection along Santa Carlotta, leading up into our neighborhoods, and those officers were there from Saturday afternoon, when the evacuation happened, until, I believe, Tuesday morning. And I saw Sergeant Smith and his motor officers up there, I don't know how much overtime it ended up, it seemed like half the Glendale police force was in our neighborhood for about four days, and they did an absolute excellent job at security out there. They were very good about making sure that only residents were able to get up into the neighborhood. They, in comparison with our neighbors to the city of LA, and unincorporated county, we were served very well, not only by the police, the Glendale Fire Department, and thank you, Chief Scoggins, for, for saving that oak tree in Duke Magian Park. The Parks and Rec people, the Glendale Rangers, I know Parks and Rec has their climbing wall in their trailer up at Duke Magian, they had to store it for a while on the street in front of Dave Ahern's house, while the backfires were being set on Monday. Glendale Water and Power with their robo-calls about electricity usage. Public Works came and picked up our trash on Monday, when all of this was going on. In conclusion, I would also mention the Emergency Operations Center. It is so good to be able to call and speak to a live person, which I did multiple times, they took my name and phone number, in case they needed to get back to me. I just basically wanted to say, thank you very much for a job well done, and the residents in our areas truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Mike Mohill, followed by David Myers.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Mike Mohill, resident of Glendale. I'd like to thank the five council members for the dedicated work you all do every week. I know it's not easy, taking the abuse from people like myself and others, however, it's part of your job. I remember when Glendale was a small sleepy town of about 100,000, and we were pretty a homogeneous town. Everybody kind of like, looked like each other. Everybody had the same interest. But today, we're a city of over 200,000 people, with different interests, and different likes and dislikes. I look up here, and I see people who live, well, let's see, Mr. Weaver lives in Glen Oaks Canyon, Mr. Drayman lives in Up Montrose, Mr. Quintero lives in north Glendale, Mrs. Friedman lives in north Glendale, and Mr. Najarian lives a little bit north of Glen Oaks Canyon. But there's nobody here representing central Glendale, southeast Glendale, or southwest Glendale. Why? Don't these voters count? They pay their taxes like everybody else. But when it comes to representation, the people who live south of the 134 freeway have, do not have a voice at the table here. It seems that all the goodies primarily go north of the 134 freeway. I'm repeating myself when talking about the Rockhaven Sanitarium conversion, $8.5 million, and the people south of the 134 freeway get about a $6 million water hole for a swimming pool, not a swimming complex that they deserve, or a soccer complex that they deserve also, like they have in north Glendale. Had there been people from the, if we had districts, I propose we change the charter to we have seven elected, elected people from seven regions of the city, and each one then would represent about 30,000 people. They would be highly paid, they would be professional, so they would have time to talk with, go out to the constituents, and find out what the needs are. It wouldn't be a part-time job, because your job is not part-time. We want you to be part-time, but we want you also to work full-time, at a part-time salary. I understand you people, excuse the language, make between $36,000 and $40,000 a year. Not a lot of money for part-time, when you put in a full-time jail. Our city manager gets over $200,000, and our managers and city middle managers make over $100,000 each. I propose that our council members make about as much as our city managers. Why not? You work very, very hard. I might not agree with you, as you all well know, however, I know you all are dedicated By having council districts, there would be more horse trading, as they would say, and that's good. Because right now, if somebody wants something south of the 134 freeway, someone in the north will say, hey, what's in it for me? That's how council districts work, in Pasadena, in Los Angeles. I think Glendale is too big to be treated like a one-horse town, because we're more than that. We have the Americana. We're big now, and we ought to act like one of the big boys, not like a little boy anymore. By paying our people, our councilmen, more money, having smaller districts, and term limits, by the way, 10 years maximum, we will join many other cities in reform movement, which will also improve the quality-of-life reports for the city, and keep Glendale in front of the news, and not behind the eight ball. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. Again, I believe, council members, you all work very hard. Thank you again for your dedication.
Thank you, Dave Myers.
Good evening, city staff, city council members. My name is David Myers, and I'm here tonight, not as a representative of any particular group, but as a resident of Glendale that wants, wants to say thank you to everyone for a job well done during these last couple of weeks. Mr. Starbuck, you have obviously placed the right people in the right place, who responded at the right time. The response and collaboration with the Crescenta Valley was well orchestrated, without much notice. How amazing it was that not one home in Glendale was lost, as we all watched in awe, as our beloved hillsides burned to the ground. The organization of this city was well demonstrated, as various departments were faced with challenge upon challenge during this dire strait of emergency. From the heroic firemen on the front lines of the fire, the police force who maintained the order, the public works department, who were on scene, ensuring power was not lost, the IT department, who kept us current on Channel 6 and on the web, and everyone else behind the scenes, who facilitated a smooth operation during what have could have been chaos. So I just want to say thank you to everyone for doing their jobs, not just doing their jobs, but doing extraordinary, extraordinary jobs during an extraordinary time. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes oral communications. Any comments? Mr. Friedman.
I want to, first of all, thank the members of the public who came to give their thanks to the city, and I want to echo those. I wasn't here last week, but I was here during the fire, and spent some time in the Emergency Operations Center, not because I had a role to play, but more as an observer. And I will tell you that I was extremely, not just proud to live in Glendale, but relieved to live in Glendale, when I saw the difference between the respondent, the response, that we were able to get out to our neighborhoods, and the way that our police department and fire departments were able to protect our neighborhoods, compared to what was happening in neighboring cities, and in the unincorporated county areas. I was very, very grateful to be living in this city, so I want to echo your thanks. And I would just like to make a comment about Mr. Mohill's suggestions. The idea of districts certainly has come up over the years, and there's pros and there's cons, but one thing I definitely don't agree with is that the people in the south part of the city don't have representation. They do have representation up on this dais. You don't have to live in a particular area to represent it, or to feel connected to it. I was very happy to have gotten a tremendous amount of votes in a lot of areas that I didn't live in, or that I don't live in, areas in the south of the city, and areas in the far north of the city, far from where my actual home is. And even though we are a growing city and a large city, we're not so huge that I think that we can't understand the issues all around the city and represent those people. And certainly, people in every area do have an opportunity to elect officials, because no matter where you live in the city, your vote, vote counts equally. People in the south part of the city's vote counts just as much as people in the north part of the city. And my one fear with districts is that we limit our choices. If we had districts, it's possible that we couldn't have all of us up here, because some of us live in close proximity to each other. I live fairly close to the mayor, so it might, probably would be one or the other of us. So we limit people's choices, we don't expand them. And I hope that during my time on this council, that I can do a better job of representing all the people and all the constituents of the city, and that's my personal goal. And so I, I hope that no one in the city feels that they're not represented, because I think all of us up here do our best to, to represent each and every single interest in each and every area.
You have a comment? Mr. Starbuck.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, just a quick one. Thanks to Mr. Weisman and Mr. Myers for their acknowledgement of the, of the work that was done during the fire. I would point out, reference was made to the call that Mr. Weisman got returned when he called the EOC. Actually, something that we don't implement, every time we implement the Emergency Operations Center, but we did in this case, is we implemented an Emergency Information Center, really two separate operations that went on at the same time. One in the basement of City Hall, which is our Emergency Operations Center, the other, the Emergency Information Center, which was established over in the police department, and staffed by Community Development and Housing, and the city clerk's office, 24 hours a day, during the entire event, and literally became the information center for the broader Loc Cressenta area, area in the county, city of LA, there were actually other agencies giving out our telephone number as a source of information to call, because they were doing such a good job of getting information from our informational staff, and then making it available to the public. Tremendous resource, kind of the unsung heroes are the, are the folks that are in the EIC, again, 24/7, manning telephones, finding out the information, and relaying it and giving people comfort. But thank you for your thanks.
Comments? Mr. Drayman?
I just wanted to echo one comment that Councilmember Friedman had made. It has nothing to do with council manic districts, it has to do with what constitutes representation, and so on. Some years ago, when I was at the, at the podium, come here for, on a variety of issues to speak, I believe Councilmember Gomez sat in the chair that Councilmember Najarian is sitting in right now. He lived in South Glendale. South Glendale represented then? I guess by, by the example we were given, yes, by virtue of the fact simply that he lived there. I believe Mr. Gomez did represent all, all of the interests of the cities. Prior to the 2007 election, no one had ever been elected from Loc Cressenta, an portion of Loc Cressenta, from the city, on the city council. We had had one appointee in the 50s, finished out a term, but no one had ever been elected, so was, was the Glendale Annex, was Loc Cressenta not represented, their interests were not represented? Also, what's the, what's the, the statute of limitations for where you live? I lived for 10 years in South Glendale, does that mean that when I moved from there, that I lost all interest in the, in that area? Or while I was living there, I only had their interests while I was living there? I also lived for a considerable amount of time, and I guess what's, would be sort of considered the north-central part of the city, right around Stocker, I lived on Columbus Avenue. So, was I only a representative of that area at the time? As some of my colleagues know, right now, I'm not living in the Montrose area because of a flood in my home. So now I'm living temporarily in a different part of the city, so do I no longer represent the Montrose area or Loc Cressenta because of that? Of course not. I understand what, I understand what the speaker is trying to say, but I just want to clarify for the public that it isn't as simple as just where you live. I think we all try to balance the interests of our greater constituency, which is the residents and city of Glendale. In terms of council manic districts, I'll just say, I've always been on the record for supporting that, and I think I am the only one on the dais that has consistently supported that, but that's a different debate for a different time.
Mr. Weaver.
Back in the 80s, Ginger Brenberg and I, and I forget, isn't it you, National League of Cities?
Pointing to Frank Quintero.
Yes.
On the record, so are we.
Yes, and my presentation was on what we had done in South Glendale as a city, one of the finals. And I think there was the number something like $35 million or something had already been spent into the 80s, an astronomical amount, more than been spent in the rest of the city at the time. The infrastructure and other needs in, in South Glendale. To anyone suggesting that we don't care about South Glendale, the backs just don't support it. You remember when we did that?
It was the first time I met Mr. Weaver on that particular trip to the League of Cities, and...
Yeah, with your wife. Yeah, with your wife?
I made a presentation specifically on South Glendale. As for myself, I spent 28 years of my life working with the residents of South Glendale and the business owners, et cetera, et cetera. So while you didn't do it tonight, Mr. Mohill, I always get a kick out of people that come to that podium and talk about South Glendale, and talk about all of the needs and all of the issues, and that we don't pay attention. I don't know where they were those, well, let's call it 25 years. I don't know where they were for 25 years while I was working in that community, but that's, that's the way it is. Okay? Any other comments?
Next, please.
Is there any new business?
Who are we adjourned?
We are adjourned.